Call this meeting to order. We stand in silence for electronic devices so we can head out to our business and join me in the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, our Son, our Holy Spirit. My kingdom come, Thy will be done. I am a guest of the Father. He gives us today our daily bread. And he gives us our trespasses. We keep our trespasses against us. He is our salvation. He is our strength. Pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any public comments?
No.
Communications?
The bid submitted their wine walk application for Saturday, October 5th, Florida 8:00 PM in the downtown location. This is the event that had previously requested the open container waiver that you guys passed at an earlier meeting. So this is just the actual application.
Any questions or concerns on that? Okay.
That's all I have.
The next city council meeting will be held Tuesday, October 15th, 2024, at 7:00 PM at the City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, city center. Today, we have a few presentations. Do you want to start with the audit presentation?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um, I'd like to welcome Matt Montalvo. Did I say it right?
Montalo.
Mont. Montalo, thank you. Uh, Dr. Malachi, who you've seen here before, he's going to go through the audit presentation. And I don't even think we need the screen because we have handouts for everyone. So, um, we did have a very nice audit committee meeting. Um, Councilmember Byakowski and Councilmember Schmidt were able to attend, go through the financials for the year, and then let Matt get into it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Over here?
Anywhere you want.
Wherever you want.
You hear me okay?
No.
All right. Um, so here to present the results of the audit. We did, as the city manager mentioned, we did previously meet with the audit committee, went through the, uh, the audit communications in detail. Uh, so I'll give you the results of the audit in the PowerPoint. Just on the first page, we provide as opinions on the financial statements. That's our primary role as an independent third party. So we clarify that management is responsible for the books and records. So the city prepares the, the records, they take responsibility. We come in as an independent third party, conduct our audit, and then provide an opinion that they fairly represent the city's financial position. So they can be relied upon by not only the council in making important decisions, going forward, but also external third parties. Uh, when you go out for financing, um, they rely on audited financial statements. So we issue that financial statements opinion. We also issue an opinion on your government auditing standards requirements. So that's more related to the internal controls, the processes over your financial reporting and compliance. And then those last two, the federal single audit and the Department of Transportation, those are compliance audits on federal and state funding that you receive. So you're, you're required to abide by their certain program requirements. Uh, so those are the four different opinions that we issue. On the next page, um, just some of our required communications. Uh, like I, I said prior, the responsibility for those records rests with management and the city. We come in as an independent third party, provide an opinion. So we did move forward with an unmodified opinion on the financial statement. So that's a clean opinion, the best you can do from an audit standpoint. Based on our audit, we believe that the city's records fairly represent your financial position. Uh, as far as the significant items, accounting policies and estimates, these are disclosed in the notes to the financial statements. Uh, no significant changes in those areas. And then a requirement for our audit, we, we have to be independent or free of conflicts of interest. So that, that's what allows our staff auditors, uh, right up to the partner level, to be independent and provide that opinion on the financial statement. Um, other matters, we did not have any difficulties performing the audit. We received full and open access to the books and records and, um, full cooperation from management. Uh, any questions on those before we kind of turn to more of the financial statement items? Okay. All right, so we'll look at the financial trends, uh, focusing primarily in the general fund. Uh, so this is a graph, five years revenues versus your expenditures within the, the general fund. And we've been showing this at, uh, our local government clients in New York State because it's an interesting trend when you look over the last five years, uh, particularly over the last two or three years. So kind of coming out of that pandemic period, um, where we saw revenues and expenditures kind of contract, uh, just in the impacts of not the uncertainty, uh, during those, those beginning months and that first year in 2020. Uh, outside of that, moving into the next two fiscal years, we saw a lot of recovery from the sales tax side, kind of a spike in those revenues. Uh, we saw an influx of federal stimulus dollars during that time period. Um, state aid came back, so a lot of those revenues started to spike. Uh, at the same time, our expenditures started to come back up to the normal levels. What we're seeing now is more of a flattening of revenues. So those federal stimulus dollars are starting to, um, wrap up those programs. The sales tax revenues are starting to flatten out a little bit. Um, sale, or, um, state aid as well. So what we're seeing is kind of a flattening of revenues, but those inflationary increase on the, on the expenditure side. However, for 2324, the city, your revenues exceeded your expenditures in the general fund about 1.36 million dollars. So that's the amount that your general fund increased in fund balance. Um, so we could kind of, definitely a stable position, but we caution going forward, those trends where our revenues are starting to flatten out and expenditures continue in the inflation area. Uh, so, uh, a good trend for 2324. Uh, how that impacted your fund balance on page four. Uh, you can see an increase over the last three or four years from 2223 to 2324, that 1.3, 1.4 million dollar increase. So the total fund balance went from 11.7 million dollars to about 13 million dollars at the end of 2024. Uh, the different components there are represented by restricted assignment committed, that's in the green portion, and then finally your unassigned fund balances. And unassigned is really the only truly available fund balance. Um, on page five, we highlight that. So your, your unassigned fund balance as it's recommended, uh, 4.6 million dollars, and that represents about 21.1% of your appropriations. Um, so it's kind of the typical, to put it into context, the typical best practices are to have a minimum of two months of your operating, or about 16.67%. That's at a minimum. Um, your fund balance policy, I believe, is 20 to 25%.
Correct.
Correct? Uh, so you were, you are within that range, uh, at about 21.1%. That still allows you the flexibility to set aside funds, uh, in your restricted and assigned areas. Um, so those are different levels of restriction, but they're set aside for specific purposes, whether it be for future capital projects, uh, future contingencies. Uh, so definitely a prudent use of that fund balance to have a plan for those kind of one-time, long-term, uh, contingency items, and also have sufficient unassigned fund balance for liquidity. So stable within the general fund. As far as kind of our overall observations, we, we also look at your enterprise funds. Uh, so this would be your water sewer and city center. The key that we look for there are, are they self-sustaining? Or do they rely on a subsidy from an operating fund? Uh, so that we did conclude, those are self-sustaining funds. Uh, they're all in a stable position. We had a lot of discussions on the water and sewer because they're such, uh, they're so heavily tied to capital needs and infrastructure projects. So the only thing we talked about was what that future planning for those, a lot of uncertainty in the infrastructure, um, and that's kind of consistent across New York State as far as water sewer. Uh, but we believe that you're in a stable position to kind of handle those challenges going forward. Um, and then really the last communication is, we didn't have any reportable findings. So no compliance findings or no internal control findings that rose to a level of significance or material. Um, so from a internal control standpoint, pretty solid. And then from a financial condition standpoint, stable position. Um, so all in all, a pretty, pretty good result from an audit. Um, I'll take any questions or concerns from the group.
Yeah, just wanted to point out, the audit committee was satisfied. All the goals that were set two years ago were met. We're built, and we're building the reserve with the workman's comp that we've requested. And, uh, so 2324 budget, we're satisfied with the way that all of them. And I believe a letter was sent out, or it will be sent out.
And it's in the packet as well. So everybody does have a copy of the audit committee's, um, response to the audit planning.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Remember you.
Thank you to everyone who serves on these committees. I know it takes a lot of time to show up and be there and put your comment. So appreciate those, I volunteer for those. It's an important due diligence for us to keep track of what's going on. And by us sitting on these committees, we can then report back to the council on, on anything we've seen or raise the alarm if necessary. So it's important that we serve on these committees. Do you have a aged person exemption discussion?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um, I believe many council members were sent this item from Treasurer Matt Kevin Andrews. I must have Matt Andrews. Um, Kevin Andrews at the county. Um, it is an age person's exemption that the city has, and the county is increasing its levels. Um, so I wanted to make sure that everyone had received it. And it's something, if you'd like, we can have staff look into it and come back to you with a recommendation, um, at a future meeting. So I don't know if everyone received the email or only certain.
I never received it. This is the, this is the chart.
Yeah, yep. So why don't we send the email out? But what it does basically is it allows the city to use the age exemption and increase the, um, amount that a senior over 65, uh, can make and still receive the exemption. I believe today we're at 18,000.
Yeah, we're at 16,500 today. It would raise it to 24,000. This has not been raised since 1994. And obviously, there's been a decline in numbers as far as how many exemptions we give out, mostly due to increases in social security income over that period of time. Um, so this would kind of right that ship in, in short, I guess.
We do know that it would affect the, um, taxable status of properties to the tune of about 2.6 million dollars. Um, but on the whole, in terms of how much our, uh, entire assessed value is, that's a, that's a very, very small percentage. So, um, like I said, we can come back to this if you'd like us to. Email the information out so you can take a look at it and get a little better analysis of what that would look like if we were to implement it.
It's definitely worth looking into. Anything we can do to help people keep, keep their homes and stay in their homes, it's important. So if they're, if they're qualified for exemption, then they should be given. So we definitely want to look into this.
Okay, yep. And I, I guess our thoughts were we'll present it to the level of where the county's moving theirs to as well. So we're in lockstep with the county. Okay.
Section three, officer designation, housing HCR grant.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Um, as part of the HCR grant, we have two resolutions before you tonight. One is the section three officer designation, and one is the labor standards officer designation. Both are required as part of the HCR grant, um, for the homeowner's assistance, so low-income homeowner residential rehab assistance. Um, we're asking that the Director of Public Works be appointed to both of these positions as the section, section three coordinator and the labor standards officer. The labor standards officer, George and I were having a conversation earlier, is more about making sure that either Davis Bacon or prevailing wages is being paid by contractors doing work. So it's more about payroll compliance of the contractors to the workers when we go to submit for grant reimbursement. So I'd recommend that we move these to the next business meeting.
Any questions or concerns on that?
So this would go to a future business meeting, not to tonight's special business?
Correct.
Right, so we have some time to think about it. So we have consensus to move that to a future business meeting?
Yeah.
I think that gets moved, and as well as the labor standards officer designation, then we'll do those together. So now transfer funds from unassigned fund balance?
Yes, so annually, when we do have a good audit and we do have funds that we can assign or put into reserve accounts, um, myself, the city manager, will provide you with recommendations. So this memo outlines those recommendations. Um, I hope those have read it. Um, if you haven't, I can certainly go over it or answer any questions at this time. But what we try to do is to put funds into strategic places when we know we have projects coming up, um, or different funds to do paving projects, to buy certain police vehicles, to continue to do work on our facilities. So this is that recommendation, and it is in line with the audit, the audit committee's recommendation. Um, and I'm hoping we can move this forward to a future business meeting.
So that would be 1.2 million dollars approximately transferred to restricted reserves and 60,000 to be committed to the Brisbane and transportation planning.
That's correct. Thank you for pointing that out. That would be committed fund balance, so slightly different. Um, the committed fund balances for projects we know that are upcoming, um, that we want to reserve, uh, fond or hot of money so we can complete those. With the Brisbane, I think we will be much more successful in moving that property into private hands if we use a firm for the marketing and tours for developers and helping us with any type of work we might need, along with Georgia's services as well.
So this would move towards a future business meeting? Are we in consensus to move that? Can we look at to move? Uh, and I covered that Brisbane is also incorporated in there, right?
That, yeah, the memo covers both. There's a resolution separate for committed fund balance for Brisbane and 10,000 for the transportation planning grant match.
So those are two separate, uh, the unassigned transfer and the Brisbane transfer, two separate resolutions. So are we in consensus to move both of those to a future business meeting?
Yes.
Can those get moved? Uh, parks and equipment capital reserve fund?
This also stems from the review we just did with the audit. The city has not had a parks capital reserve fund. Um, we've relied on operating costs, and to be honest, a lot of times, that's one of the first things that are caught is parks material, parks equipment. Um, so we'd like to set up a parks capital equipment reserve fund and per the memo, put $125,000 from unassigned fund balance into reserves to start building that fund balance or savings account for future projects.
Questions or concerns?
So are we in consensus to move that to a future business meeting? Committed fund balance for FEMA flood review?
So another request, request for committed fund balance. FEMA recently presented draft flood maps, floodplain maps to the city and Genesee County. Um, as everyone knows, the Tonawanda Creek traverses through the city, almost cutting our city in half, and there are many different residential and business properties located within floodplain areas. The new maps will absolutely change, um, properties that are in the floodplain, and they will take some out. But with that said, we would really like to have, um, stream expert engineers come in, understand the modeling, understand the, um, elevations that were used, to make sure we're comfortable with the maps and how they're being presented. And then also to be able to be more educated, um, what, at what level does the creek need to get to? How far will it flood? And how much will it flood? So we're looking into some different, um, computerized data that might be able to help us show that on maps to show residents what their risk might be. Uh, it's going to be a long process. It's going to be a long process helping folks whose property is coming out of the flood zone because they have to file with FEMA. FEMA has to give them a waiver that they're out, then they have to file with insurance, and they're going to need the city's help to walk through that process. Um, those that are coming in are going to want to understand why. And we still need to look through LOMAs, which are letters of map amendments that people have already filed that took their property out and tried to recertify that their property is out. So it's, it's going to be a long road, but I would like to start with some engineering work to certify the data that is being used to help us understand it better and make sure there's not any elevations that we could possibly get groups or sections of the city out of the floodplain.
Yeah, Rachel, will you have a representative of FEMA coming in to, uh, explain to us how all this is derived at, that it be open to the public?
Yes, so they had municipal meetings. I believe you guys received the link to a Zoom meeting if you wanted to attend. Then they move into public meetings in the next three or so months.
So I can see it to be pretty testing for the people that are going into the flood zone.
It absolutely will be. And it's, that's why I feel like if we do our due diligence and make sure that any of the measurements and LiDAR maps that have been done are accurate and complete, then we can say with confidence to our residents, we looked into this, we put engineers on it, yes, this is correct. Or wait, we see a discrepancy and we're going to help get this property out or this group of properties because maybe something wasn't known to FEMA. So, um, there's not only that public meeting, and then there's notice periods where we can submit official comments to the record to, to maybe challenge results or agree with results at the end. Um, my last thing is the city needs to look at at some point. Any type of mitigation members that, mitigation measures that we might be able to do in the future to reduce the floodplain overall. And I don't know what that is. I'm not an engineer, um, but it's certainly something I think we should have as a goal for the next five or six years to see what might be able to be done to better assist our residents and homeowners. So that's not in this 50 grant. That's going to cost a lot more money, but I think it's something we should keep working on.
Just so you know, this one will be voted on tonight due to the, I guess it's a time factor.
It is. We only have 30 days to make our, um, initial comments, so we want to get our folks working on it right away.
And especially like, I know there's several people in Austin out that, um, applied and got out of the flood zone. So now, where are they now? That's important to find out.
Right.
Right, so we need to find out.
So now the math has you back in, so we.
I have my properties, and then half is out. I mean, and I'll fight that tooth and nail because you won't be able to sell your house.
You, you did a letter of map amendment, so we're going to go for you and review those and put tags on those. But thank you for letting us know.
There's several people that.
Anyone that has gotten this survey and letter of map amendment, we want to hear from you. We're trying to look at all our records, go into the maps, and identify those properties and flag them that they have already been given a letter of map amendment. Therefore, they shouldn't be included in the new floodplain. So we're.
And I have, they made me put a sump pump in the basement when we built the house 33 years ago, and it's never went out once. It's pumped dry. You can drop a stone, and it doesn't crunk for a long time. It's very, very dry.
I'm the same way, and I'm not that far away, so.
Well, and that's like these maps will be very interesting because of the creek's 13 feet, which I don't think it's gotten to since 1942. Is it an inch of flooding and how far away is that inch? Or is it feet of flooding? You know, so there's, there's definitely some review.
And that wasn't even a flood we learned either.
Ice jam?
Well, they didn't have, I mean, the fact that those houses that had exemptions weren't in that map, why didn't they know about that? Why didn't they adjust for that? So that's, that raised a very, very good question. So I think that's why this is even more important.
It's very important.
I think we owe it to everyone in the city to work as hard as we possibly can. The chief is the floodplain coordinator, and Zach Altworth is the floodplain manager down in the code department, plus myself and Eric and other team members, Bob Fick of the fire department. Um, we'll all be working on this on behalf of residents to get the best outcomes we can get.
So any discussion on this? Are we in consensus to move that to tonight's special business? Uh, the HVAC award?
Yes, thank you, Council President. So the city put out a bid for HVAC services related to the property we own occupied by Theater 56, as well as, um, the city clerk's office for a unit that needs to be replaced. We did receive a bid back from Arctic Refrigeration for 109,300 dollars. We would like, we, we gave you a new resolution because we had some financial good news. We got a $10,000 grant from the, um, I'm going to get it wrong. Community? No, it's on the next one for the trees. I just got to find it. Thank you, George. Climate Smart Communities. Um, so we want to apply that, and we also need to have appropriated facility reserves for 100,000 dollars. The HVAC units in the, over the theater are extremely dated, and they were never replaced as part of the scope of the project for the theater. So as the city does own the space and leases it, it is our responsibility to take care of these items.
Any questions or concerns on that? So that also would get moved to tonight's business meeting? Are we in consensus to do that?
Yes.
Okay. The tree funding?
Yes, so you have before your resolution to amend the Parks Department budget. Um, we were awarded 5,000 dollars from the Climate Smart Communities Act. Uh, because we complete, successfully completed three high-impact actions, the 5,000 dollars will aid us in tree plantings outside of the disadvantaged zones, so more on the north side of the city for this year. A total budget, because council already approved, 4,000 will be 9,000 dollars for those plantings we want to get done this fall.
That's, that's separate from that news release?
Yes, correct. The 700,000-plus grant is only to be used in the disadvantaged zones, which is mostly Ward 5, Ward 6, and then a, a center section of the city. Um, and I have a map I can get out to everyone if they'd like to see that.
Okay, so then I serve up the tree funding, the one that's before us on the agenda, the 5,000 state aid for parks. That is going to be at a future business meeting. So are we in consensus to move that to a future business meeting? Can they get to move? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Beely? Second in line, Mr. Guy. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes. Okay, so now I call to order the special business meeting. We have several agenda items. 108, 2024, the wastewater facility agreement between the city and the town. I'm Mr. Byakowski. 109, 2024, the 50,000 unassigned fund balance for the FEMA review. Mr. Schmidt. And 110, 2024, the HVAC services. Mr. Twitchell. Okay, 108, 2024, Mr. Byakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to amend the wastewater facility agreement between the city of Batavia and the town of Batavia.
Second in line, Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Okay, resolution 109, 2024, Ms. Schmidt, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution transferring 50,000 dollars from unassigned fund balance to committed fund balance for FEMA flood remapping review and potential appeal activities.
Second in line, Mr. Richmond. Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 110, 2024, Mr. Twitchell.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to enter into an agreement with Arctic Refrigeration for HVAC services.
Second in line, Ms. Briggs? Questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Okay, um, I guess we are, the executive session is for an evaluation. We can postpone that till next meeting. So we are going to end the meeting now if that's okay with everyone. Motion to adjourn by Ms. Schmidt. Second to by Mr. Beely. Call the roll.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Twitchell?
Yes.
Guy?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Do you?